This is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. It's May 18th, 2020. We're not going to be able to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We can take a 30-second moment of silence, please. All right, thank you for that. At this time, we will move for an approval of the agenda. I do need to make at this point one addition to the agenda that I inadvertently left off last week. I need to add on to the agenda as item number four and push the liquor license to item number or probation to number five and then liquor license to number six. So in the number four spot, I would like to add the letter for build a generation to our agenda. And with that, then I would move to approve the agenda with that addition.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion on that at this point?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, cool. With that, all those in favor of approving the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Okay, so with that, we will move next into county informational items. Commissioner Mudge, if you'd like to start.
I'd just like to recognize Public Works. This week is National Public Works Week. And so thank you all to the employees and staff with Public Works and our partners who work tirelessly to keep everything running for us across the county.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any community informational items at this point?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. And for myself, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Mudge's sentiments regarding National Public Works Week. And I would also like to just take a moment to say thank you to the hard work of our other elected officials and staff for their participation through the COVID event. We've all been working really hard and have pulled together as a team. And for that, I am very thankful. So thank you to each and every one of you for the work that you've done. I appreciate it. With that, we will move into Commissioner clarifications. Are there any Commissioner clarifications from Commissioner Glenn at this time?
I have nothing.
All right, Commissioner Mudge.
I don't have any clarifications, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, we will move into public comments on items not on the agenda. And so if you will please raise your hand in the chat box for me to see, then I will be able to call on you to read out your public comment.
I don't see any hands up. Kayla, we have about 16 participants.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much, Commissioner Mudge. So with that, we will move into agenda item number one, which is St. George's Food Donation Update and Continuation. I don't know that Janine McGee is on the line at this point, but I had put this on our agenda because St. George's has reached the end of the county's contribution for their purchases of food for the food bank. And so St. George's had sent an email and said that there still is a need for the food at the food bank and wanted to know if we, as the county body, would entertain any further funding for the food at St. George's.
I would be comfortable entertaining this, absolutely. Do we? I know there was a question at one point of the reimbursement, as far as that aspect is going with finance and emergency management. And with Janine, do we know? Just to get a better idea of our commitment moving forward, do we have a solid answer whether or not we are going to see a 75-25 reimbursement? Kayla, do you know?
Oh, sorry. We will experience a 75-25 reimbursement for that first six weeks of orders. So we will see reimbursement on 75% of that $12,000 worth of ordering that they have done.
Did we want to look at another timeframe to commit? Or what's the rest of the board's sense here? And do we know that Emily, I wish Janine, I don't see her on, was on, because I know Emily had been introduced to a resource at the state that Janine brought to one of our, the food security meetings a couple of weeks ago. And we were hoping that that would be another source of some food items.
Yeah, so I think that they're still working out through some of those logistics at the state level. And in speaking to Emily on Friday, there still is a need for us to supplement some of the food bank. But I would be happy to push this until Thursday if we wanted to get some more specifics from Janine and Emily and perhaps Veronica on what the need is.
I guess that would be better, rather than making up a timeframe moving forward. Although I'd be happy to commit to, you know, participating and contributing this week, so there's not necessarily a gap. And then talking about, you know, further information, sharing your education with folks utilizing St. George's as far as benefits and programs available.
Sure. Commissioner Glenn, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'd rather get a little more information. I know how busy they are down there. So I kind of agree with Sarah. If we can give them a temporary donation for a week or whatever, and then make a bigger plan. But I need more information.
Sure. So would it be appropriate to say that we would move forward with allowing them to place another food order for this week and then invite them to have a conversation with us on Thursday?
I think that's
Sure.
Sounds great.
Okay, wonderful. Go ahead, Sarah.
I'll make a motion to contribute to the food ordering through St. George's this week. Sorry. And ask that the leaders in food dispersment help help us understand more and join us for our special meeting on Thursday, this Thursday.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. With that, is there any further discussion at this point? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, wonderful. Commissioner Mudge, can you vote on that for us as well, please?
Apologies. Aye.
All right, so with that, we will move into our next agenda item, which is item number two, Emergency TANF Funding Letter to Arapahoe County. Janine is not able to join us at this point. So I am wondering if. Janine is here. Hi, Janine. Hi. So Janine, we just moved on to number two on our agenda, which is the letter for Emergency TANF Funding to Arapahoe County. And just to kind of give you some information on our agenda item number one, which was a food order for St. George's Church. We've made a motion to allow St. George's Church to purchase this week worth of food for the food bank. And then we would like to meet with them again on Thursday to talk through their long-term plan and continual needs. So we will What's that?
Sorry. Sorry to have missed it. Did they make another request or was that missed?
So I had spoken to Emily on Friday, and it sounded like they still anticipate a need. So they would just like to have a conversation with us regarding the long-term planning.
Okay.
So we'll ask them to join us on Thursday at 1:00 for that long-term planning. And so we were just moving into item number two, which was the sorry about that, the letter for Emergency TANF dollars from Arapahoe County. So if you'd like to just walk us through that a little bit?
So typically, when counties run out of TANF dollars and they expect that they may need more before the end of their state fiscal year, they are allowed to check with other counties who have underspent in their TANF dollars and see if those counties are willing to sell them some TANF dollars. And essentially, what that means is that county, for the county MOE, which, so the MOE is a portion that any county who would use those dollars would need to pay. And right now, it's about 14 cents on the dollar. So since we have used all of our TANF reserves and we are projected to spend our TANF allocation, we would have no TANF dollars in case we went over on our TANF allocation, because we have a higher number of folks enrolling in TANF from the beginning of April going forward. This would county in dollars. And also allows us to be able to potentially provide some more assistance to TANF if we feel like we need to. Or if we feel like we just want to have that in reserve, so that we have a reserve for TANF. So when counties asked who could sell dollars, there were no counties interested in selling their county dollars in mid-April. As a result of our request to the Works Allocation Committee and the state to replenish the county TANF reserves that we have used, and a couple of other counties have also used their TANF reserves for disaster assistance. Arapahoe County reached out to those counties who have overspent and made an offer to sell some of their county TANF dollars. So they essentially offered us $50,000 in TANF dollars for 14 cents on the dollar of TANF allocation. And then the county has to just pay the MOE when we use those TANF dollars. So it was a generous offer by Arapahoe County to help us out. It will make sure that we have something in our reserves and we can cover any overage. That's a long explanation. People feel free to
Thanks, Janine. I think you froze up, maybe. So I had put this on the agenda because I would like to ask my fellow board members, Commissioner Glenn and Commissioner Mudge, to support a letter of thanks from the Board of County Commissioners to Arapahoe County for extending us the opportunity to purchase those TANF dollars from them.
That would be great. No, I appreciate Janine looking out for other resources. So I apologize, Commissioner Marcello. Did you say that you had drafted a letter already?
No, I would be in the process of drafting a letter. And I had put this on the agenda to ask for your support in drafting that letter from us as a board.
I would support that.
Commissioner Glenn, what are your comments or thoughts?
I'm fine with that.
Wonderful, thank you. So I will make a motion that we draft a letter and send it to Arapahoe County thanking them for the opportunity to purchase Emergency TANF funding from them.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion from Commissioner Glenn at this point?
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
All right, wonderful. With no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you so much. Moving on to agenda item number three, which is Senior Tax Exemption Resolution. Okay, so I had also placed this on the agenda and I had sent this out to our other elected officials to ask for unification as an elected body to move forward with supporting the senior and veteran, disabled veterans' tax exemption. It allows our seniors and disabled veterans to qualify for an exemption of their property taxes on the first $200,000 of their property. I see that we have Stephanie McBride with us from the Assessors' Office and Miguel Martinez, our assessor. So Miguel and Stephanie, could you talk to us a little bit about the senior exemption process and fiscal impact in Lake County?
This is Miguel. Yeah, so in Lake County, we have it's for qualifying veterans. And some of that criteria is that you are 65 years or older prior to the year of application and that you've lived in your house as your primary residence for over 10 years. And it does apply to the first $200,000 of value of the home. And in Lake County, we do have the senior exemption, the total relief that is funded by the state is $258,264.76 for the seniors. And for the veterans, it's $3,584.92. And so that would be the amount of financial need we would have to consider funding locally as the state pulls that back from the state budget.
Thanks, Miguel. I had wanted to follow the draft resolution that was put in place with our neighboring county, well, not our neighboring county, but a partner county, Fremont County, to implore to the JBC how important this exemption was. So I believe that we need to uphold the senior exemption because those folks that would be impacted are essentially, as Miguel has said, the backbone of our community. And it really is very disproportionate in them experiencing a tax increase. And it's very inequitable. So with that, I would like to ask my fellow board members if they have any additional comments or questions on that.
I don't think I have any more questions other than, Miguel, could you restate? Okay, so I think we're getting a little bit of a hacking going on. Okay, we're just going to do that.
All right. What was that, Sarah?
I apologize. Had to, I think we have some questionable behavior going on, the Zoom meeting here. I am wondering if you can repeat that number. I apologize. The value of upholding the senior exemption and veterans exemption, please.
Sure. So the veterans, and I didn't go over the criteria for the veterans exemption, but the criteria there is that you have 100% disability from the Veterans Administration. And so we have five qualifying and one new applicant. That would bring us to six total. And so that amount for the veterans is $3,584.92. And the seniors total, and it's around, actually, the exact number is $258,264.76.
And that's just for the senior exemption. And then the additional amount for the veterans comes to a little bit over $3,000. Is that correct, Miguel?
Yes, $3,584.92.
So in total, it would bring us to about $261,000, $262,000 that we would need to find additional revenue sources for or be willing to cover within our budget. But I think the opportunity cost for those in our community is much greater. So that, you know, $6 to $800 per year that those senior citizens and veterans have exempted from their property tax will have a much higher impact on their quality of life, I think.
Definitely. You do hear a lot from them in the past, when it was defunded, about the hardship and forcing them to make tough decisions around medication and food because they are on a fixed income. And it's about 600 people that it impacts. And I don't think the number for the seniors, the dollar amount really is representative of the need that those people have being on fixed incomes and their ability to find $600 more dollars year after year. And potentially even more as our valuations increase for properties every two years in the odd numbered year.
Yeah, I think in the spirit of, you know, trying to be resilient and move through recovery and COVID, especially, not upholding this is going to put an additional strain on kind of that mask care piece. And we don't want people going without medications and basic necessities.
Commissioner Glenn?
I have no arguments with any of you about this subject.
Thanks, Commissioner Glenn. I appreciate your support. I have passed this to all of our elected officials so that we can sign this as an elected body and we can pass it on to our state representative, Julie McCluskey, to let her know of the importance. And also so that we can honor the senior tax exemption in the 2021 budget year. So Patty, I have a quick question as to what the resolution number is for this.
Let me try and unmute her. Okay, Patty, you're unmuted.
It looks like it would be 11. The resolution number.
Okay, thank you so much, Patty. So I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-11 and honor the senior tax exemption for budget year 2020.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? Commissioner Mudge?
Nope, just want to be clear that, you know, we intend to adopt it should the JBC or, no, they have. I'm sorry. Yeah, should they not uphold it? So I have no further clarifying questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Glenn?
I have nothing.
All right. So with that, no further discussion, all those in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2020-11? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you all. All right, and so with that, we will move into number four, which is, did I say probation needs when I re? Sorry.
Yes. Yep.
All right, so number four is probation needs. And from probation here today, we have Wendy Slaven and we also have Boyd Frick with us to talk us through some of the construction needs that they have at their current probation space. So Wendy and Boyd, if you'd like to walk us through that a little bit?
You should be unmuted now, Wendy.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming you can hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks for having probation on your agenda today as we continue to discuss safety and our operations. We want to ensure that we have appropriate space to conduct probation business. And I know these have been extremely trying, challenging and busy times for the county. So thank you for making time on your busy agenda. You should have a couple of handouts from Boyd Frick, probation supervisor in the Leadville office. One is on a proposed remodel from KW and another is just a few talking points in terms of our proposal today.
Wendy, would you like? Would you like me to pull those up?
That'd be great.
Okay.
If you want to pull up the document, just the proposal first, that'd be great. And then we'll pull up the proposed remodel from KW second.
Okay.
So as you may remember, we have been talking about space needs for probation for some time. October of 2017, probation moved out of the courthouse to 1205 Harrison Avenue due to environmental health concerns in our old space in the basement of the courthouse. A lease was signed by the county and the hornings for our temporary space where we currently are. In May 2019, after working with State Judicial, Tom Franklin with State Court Administrator's Office and KW Construction, a proposal was submitted to make our location safer for employees and the public. And the proposal included providing a lobby that would separate the public from the probation space and allowed for the public to enter the building and wait in an enclosed lobby area, providing an increase in security for probation. It would involve, you know, installing a flexi glass window and a door into the probation working area that would improve staff safety and provide a confidential space to conduct court probation business. And we have an updated proposal from KW as part of your handout packet, as the previous proposal was done May of 2019. And we'll talk about that KW proposal here in a minute. Additionally, the current pandemic, COVID-19, has further expedited the need for a separate lobby for probation, a separation between probation staff and the public waiting in our current unsecure lobby. As I've mentioned, there's no barrier between the public and probation staff currently in our space at 1205 Harrison. In addition to this, I guess of additional concern is that we have one probation officer who must walk through the public space to leave her office and enter into the rest of the probation space or probation suite. It's been problematic from the start as any member of the public can hear conversations from her office into the unsecure lobby area. And so, you know, we really do need to bring her into a secured probation area where the rest of us are. And so I'd like to turn this over to Boyd. He has a few additional talking points, as well as he's going to walk us through the proposed remodel from KW. And then we can answer any questions that the board might have.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Yeah, just to further elaborate, currently, the Lake County probation office in our current space, we're the only office in the district that does not have some type of secured waiting or lobby area to prevent the public or someone on probation to access our entire workspace. It's, as Wendy mentioned, it's been a very large safety concern for the staff at our office. So currently, we're the only building in the district, only probation office that has the situation. And I understand that when we made the move and had to move out of the courthouse, we really did have limited options, uh, in regard to where we were going to be going. And so it was great that we have the space and the space meets our needs in a lot of ways. However, this one, uh, glaring problem of not being able to adequately secure and protect staff is, is, as Wendy mentioned, it's just gotten a little more, um, exploited with COVID-19. Really, and these, these improvements that we're asking for, one, for staff safety, to have a better, uh, secure space for the public when they're coming into our, into our building to be able to find out what they're there for, what their needs are and how we can proceed as opposed to just allowing them access to the entire probation building and, and probation, um, uh, staff. So the, the, the improvements that, that we're proposing will take care of this problem and make our space usable for, um, uh, for the unforeseen future. I, I know that we have, uh, hopes of, uh, at one point in time, having a new justice center. I know that, uh, things look different, um, for everyone, uh, throughout the United States right now and government agencies in general. So we're unsure what that looks like. And this will give us an opportunity, uh, for probation to remain where we're at for as long as we need to be there. Um, as Wendy mentioned, our lease is going to be up in a year. I don't foresee us moving anywhere in the next year or having the opportunity to move somewhere in the next year. And so, uh, these improvements are just going to help make our temporary space a more permanent space in order to conduct court business and interact safely with the, with the public. Sarah, if you wouldn't mind putting up the next, uh, attachment that I had sent, and that's the KW Construction, kind of their proposal, um, we can just go through that briefly. And probably the most important page would be the very last page, page nine. But we can go through the cost breakdown as well.
So I'm on the, I'm on page nine. And we have-
I think on our shared screen, we still see the, uh, the first document, the Lake County probation office safety.
Oh, okay. Let me try this. Does that work?
Perfect. Yeah. That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Um, so from this, from this document, uh, the, the additions or the, uh, the safety improvements that, that we have shown, um, on the, the right side where it says vestibule, that's our current entrance into the probation space. Currently, there's, um, and then after that door, you just have access into the main office space. So there's no, uh, there's no confidentiality. There's no way to keep the public from just walking into our, uh, probation area if they, if they want to. Um, you know, when we were in the courthouse, we had the, the, um, you know, the, the sheriff's office there, we had court security. So there was a lot of, uh, levels of safety that were just built in to being at the courthouse. Um, we're on our own, um, in the space that we are now. And so once we open that front door, as you can see, someone can just walk right in. So the improvements are, uh, having a door with a plexi pass-through window and to have a secure vestibule area. Um, and then with that, the front office is currently where one of our probation officers conducts meetings with clients. So you can see that her door is directly into the lobby area. So if we have a secure waiting area, we need to bring her into with the, uh, the, the main probation staff area with everyone else. We would be moving her into room number four, which is currently where, uh, Wendy is at, uh, chief of the district. And Wendy would move to the new office that's, uh, in the proposal, and that would be her space. So the improvements are having that secure lobby area with a pass-through window and plexi. We can allow, uh, the public to walk in our front door into a secure, um, or at least a walled off lobby area. Be able to approach them with the, at the window to be able to have that barrier, find out what their needs are, who they're there to see, and then they continue to wait. As of right now, Ro Mooney, our support staff, has to go answer the door when someone rings a doorbell and then she has direct contact with them. Um, and so she would be able to have a secure working spot to, uh, first contact the public. It's also really important to move Wendy out of room number four into, uh, the new office, uh, being the chief of the district. She's conducting business for Eagle County, for Lake County, Summit County, and Clear Creek, um, and supervises and is charge of, uh, staff throughout the district. And then the current spot where she is, it really is difficult. There's not a lot of confidentiality. She has a probation officer right next to her in room five and a probation officer right next to her in room three that, uh, it makes it difficult for her to have confidential discussions when she needs to. So by putting her into this new office and giving her that new space, it really gives her, um, the ability to conduct, uh, businesses as a chief probation officer, uh, much better than she's able to now. Then we would also have that front office space to hopefully, uh, be able to use with some of our community partners going forward. As you all know, um, we currently collect, uh, urinalysis samples in the court parking lot with a van. We'd be able to explore maybe, uh, working with some of our, uh, providers to, uh, better serve the, the probation clients and the members of, uh, Lake County. So that's the proposal. The rest of, or that's the, the blueprint. The rest of the proposal is really breakdown of costs. And, and I'll tell you, the, the initial, uh, the initial breakdown that we got in May of 2019 was, uh, over six thousand dollars more. We've done some tweaking on the proposal to try and bring cost down and make this more affordable. Initially, we had proposed two offices, uh, next to the new office so that we could have a, uh, more of a confidential conference room. We're, we're willing to make some concessions and can continue to do business, um, by just adding one office and we'll problem solve around not having a confidential conference room, but I think we'll be able to do that. And Wendy, do you have?
Yeah. Yeah. If I could just add, because it's not really captured on the schematic. So in this main office space, uh, we currently have, uh, you know, a conference table, um, that seats, I don't know, however many people, eight, eight-ish people. And Ro Mooney, our, um, support staff and useful public service coordinator is also located in this general main office space. Um, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes. And thank you, Wendy. And currently, when we need to utilize the conference space, if someone's in that waiting area or, uh, in the vestibule now, we can't have conversations and we can't conduct business because they can hear what we're talking about. And it's a, it's a confidentiality issue with the, with the public. We're talking about their neighbors. We're talking about their, uh, the people that live, um, in the same community with them. And so, uh, we don't have the ability to do that. We also conduct a, a free group, um, weekly, um, for our higher risk clients on probation in that conference space. And that also presents some, uh, some problems when someone walks into the lobby. We kind of have to stop, wait for them to get to an office where they're going to or till they leave to continue with, uh, that, that free service that we provide, um, to some people on probation. Um, if you, if you want, we can go through the breakdown of costs, but, um, the, the total cost for the remodel, for the new office to have a secure vestibule waiting area to bring Katie back into the, um, to, with the rest of the staff is, uh, twenty-five thousand five hundred. The, the original proposal was closer to thirty-two thousand. So by making some adjustments, we'd be able to bring that down. And after, as noted, after these, um, improvements are made, we'll have a workable space to be able to conduct probation business until, until you, you need us to be somewhere else.
Thank you, Boyd. Thank you, Wendy. Um, I think it's really important. Thank you. I think it's really important to move forward and get you all, um, appropriate space. You know, if, if for no other reason than, so you're able to provide the best service possible to, um, our community. But certainly through COVID, um, and the events, uh, it, it, it kind of sheds a brighter light on all of that. So, um, I appreciate you working with KW and working down those numbers as well. And, and I also, forgive me if you mentioned, um, you know, any improvements, we'll arrange, uh, with the hornings and the landlords to, uh, be temporary should they want those removed, uh, after, after they're put in and after, you know, the term of whatever new lease is agreed upon is up.
Thanks. Um, this will alleviate the need for that space down in the sheriff's area as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, as soon as we're able to secure some additional space here, we can start to see, you know, our maximum high-risk clients, um, in our 1205 Harrison Avenue space. We were using that, uh, current office location we have in the basement area for that purpose as well as, you know, when we have court. Um, but we, we could certainly, uh, release that space if we were able to, to get some additional space.
Great. Thanks. I know that that would help the sheriff's office with interviews for investigations and, and COVID and all that kind of stuff as well. So that's, that's definitely helpful. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions at this point?
I have none.
All right. Um, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the improvements, uh, and the quote given by KW for, um, the Lake County probation office.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion at this point, Commissioner Glenn?
I have nothing.
When, when did you all say that they could start this work and would you anticipate it being completed?
Sure. So with, uh, next steps going forward, I know that, uh, after discussion with KW that they do have the ability to, to start as soon as we're able to give them the green light to do so. We do, uh, probably the next step, if this is approved, is to, uh, make sure that we don't need any additional permits or, um, permission from building and land use and, um, just because we are making a, a little change to the entry area. Uh, so, uh, any help on that end would be greatly appreciated. I'm not sure how we proceed with that. But once that's completed, um, from talking with KW, they'd be able to get going, um, immediately.
And the county would be the pro- the project manager on this particular, um, remodel. And I, I suppose KW, we need to know who to communicate with, um, from the county.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to talk through that a little bit. Are there any other arrangements that you might need from the county in the courthouse while the construction is going on? Do you anticipate, um, definitely keeping that office through construction at least? But if there's any other needs with our current teleworking, uh, arrangements, you know, we do have the BOCC room that's available, um, almost always at this point. Um, so, so let us know what other space you may need if people need to move out while construction is happening.
Yeah, and I think we can talk about that, um, as we proceed. I, I guess I don't know exactly what this is going to look like. Are they going to be in there Monday through Friday during business hours? Will they be in there in the evening? Will they be there on the weekend? Um, but we can, we can certainly talk about that.
Okay. Let's arrange a meeting with, uh, Building and Land Use and one, one of you perhaps, uh, to kind of get some of the details organized and, uh, following the decision made here.
Should, should that be with Paul or who, who should be there?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
All right. Um, anything further, Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
All right. I don't have anything to add at this point either. Um, so with that and the motion on the floor, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us, Wendy. And Boyd, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but your, um, your piece is good to go. And we will coordinate with, um, you all and Paul and Sheriff Reyes to get some of those logistics worked out so that we can get the, that space reorganized.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your help. We really appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. And Kayla, Commissioner Marcela, I'm sorry, I, I, uh, did fumble the order of items. So we can go into the letter of support for bag if you would like.
Sure. Um, so this is, uh, number five, which is a letter of support for Build a Generation. And this, uh, letter of support for Build a Generation is for us to send to the JBC, the Joint Budget Committee, asking for a reduction in the cut in the budget, um, for those nonprofit entities. The letter was submitted to us from the director of Build a Generation, Katie Baldassar, and she is on the line as well. So Katie, if you would like to speak to this a little bit?
Um, sure. So just recap kind of what I came to you all with last week. The, uh, JBC, you know, the, as you guys know, the, um, state budget has about a three and a half billion dollar shortfall. Um, the JBC is making decisions right now, um, the Joint Budget Committee, about where those cuts will fall. And the, um, work that we're funded to do particularly with, um, uh, communities that, that maybe struggle a little bit more than other communities. Yeah, you know, young people, seniors, people of color, um, people with low incomes, is taking a, a pretty disproportionate hit. Um, so it's being cut by almost sixty percent. And, uh, that has a significant impact on, on our ability to do good work in the community. You know, I think the example we call that in the letter, that work funds our, our work on affordable housing. And, um, we did a survey in 2015 and that was, um, affordable housing was the highest need in the community. And right now, um, we are working with about seven other agencies to address community needs in the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, and housing is still the biggest need. So, um, just super important that I think we continue that work. And our, exactly, you know, as you said, um, Commissioner Marcela, the, uh, request is, is not for those funds not to, um, take a cut. We understand that everybody has to take a cut, um, but to scale that cut back a little bit so that we can finish the really good work that has been started. And yeah, this letter, you know, you all have, um, some power and some voice with the, the JBC. So some of our former legislators, when I reached out to them, um, suggested that it, it might be helpful if you all were willing to, um, to bring a letter of support or sign a letter of support. And, um, yeah, I'm happy to entertain questions or discuss more.
Uh, Commissioner Glenn or Commissioner Mudge, do you have any questions for Katie at this point?
I don't have anything at the time.
Commissioner Mudge, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. Um, I don't have anything further at this point. Thank you for keeping us in the loop with what you're expecting to, uh, be confronted with, Katie. I know that these are tough times for all of us. And so any little bit that we can do to help to, uh, show a united front of the impacts on our rural community is all- to help to show a united front of the impacts on our rural community is always a good thing. So, so with that, I will make a motion that we approve the letter of support to the Joint Budget Committee on behalf of the board for Build a Generation.
Second?
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further comments or questions at this time or discussion?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Mudge?
No.
All right. And I have nothing further at this point either. With that, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much for your time today, Katie. We appreciate it. And I will get that letter signed and get it over to you.
Thank you all. I'm, on behalf of, you know, my staff and the community members that we're working with, just really, really thank you from the bottom of my heart today. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Same to you, Katie. Thank you.
Bye.
All right. So with that, we will move on to agenda item number five, which is a renewal liquor license, just one second here, for Russell Discount LLC, doing business as Saturday's Discount. So liquor license is our process through the clerk and recorder's office. And we have our clerk and recorder with us today. Patty, do you have any, anything to add about this liquor license? Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Let me try to unmute. Patty, I think you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I have no questions or concerns with this. Everything seemed to be in order and the fees have been paid.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks, Patty. We appreciate that. So Patty has sent us the information for the renewal of the liquor license. And there are no concerns from the clerk in regards to the application or the fees that have been paid with the application.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Saturdays.
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion from Commissioner Glenn at this point?
I have nothing.
All right. Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
All right. Wonderful. With that, and seeing no further discussion from myself either, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, Patty. I will connect with you to get a signature on that and get that, get that done for you. All right. Moving into reports, minutes, bills, and payroll. We have bills and payroll for a pay period ending May 8th, 2020. I will make a motion that we approve bills and payroll for pay period ending May 8th, 2020.
Second?
Okay. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Glenn?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
Okay. None from myself either. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Wonderful. Great. Thank you. So with that, and no further discussion on any of the new business at this point, we will adjourn at 1:55 PM. Patty, I will connect with you to get the signatures on the resolution for the senior tax exemption. And I will draft the letter to Arapahoe County with Janine and pass it on to my fellow board members.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for a productive meeting. Sorry about our meeting being hacked earlier. And as always, if you have any questions or concerns, please feel, feel free to reach out to myself or my fellow board members. Have a great day.
Take care, everyone.